I'd like to call this into order and welcome everybody to the June 14th Board of Alderman Meeting. Tonight, our prayer will be by Alderman Best.
Good evening. Can we all please take a moment for prayer? Heavenly Father, I thank you for allowing us once again this beautiful day. And Lord, as we, as the Board of Alderman, conduct the business of this city, let us be mindful that we are making the decisions that will affect all citizens of this city. And Lord, touch each and every one of us, touch our mind, touch our heart, and let us conduct the business of this city and respect each other in a professional manner. Amen?
Amen. Please join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Mayor Pro Tim Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Oden.
Here.
Okay, and the first agenda item we have is request of petition of citizens. The first one we have is from Rebecca Tindell. Please come up to the mic and state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Rebecca Tindell. I reside at 5721 Gondolier Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. I would like to first start off by saying that moving forward with putting protections on Union Point Park, I have contacted the National Park Services in Raleigh, and I have contacted them, and we're in the process of looking into putting pure paternity on the park. And so, that's a good sign. So, in the future, you know, I'm looking for at least like 25 years, so that those two parcels don't get sold, and that doesn't come back up, you know, on this Alderman Board or future Alderman Board, that those two parcels will be protected for a while. I also would like to say that it's good to hear that there will be cameras being put in at City Hall for everyone's safety, so that's nice to hear. And I would just like to say that for this Board or any future Board, if you were voting on something, and there is intimidation by another Board member or someone else outside of the group, maybe you can bring it to people's attention, because the Alderman Board, people who come up to speak in public, my, anyone, this is a public meeting, and we should feel comfortable speaking out about anything and any concerns that are happening inside City Hall or outside of City Hall. So basically, what I want to say is that there shouldn't be any intimidation from anybody inside City Hall or outside of City Hall. Everybody should be able to speak freely, and they should be able to vote freely if you're on the Board or outside of the Board. For a future Alderman Board, I would just like to say that if there is something happening, if there's something that comes up, any new endeavors that come up, make sure that you have the time to read what comes up, make sure you have as much information that you have to make an educated vote, make sure that the people who do come and speak, that you're willing to listen to them. I'm in this position at the moment because February 8th, I don't think that the public was heard, I don't think on March 8th, I don't think lower lie was heard about the park, I've had to bypass the Alderman Board and go to the National Park Services. So, I just, you know, if someone's taking their time, volunteering their time to come up here, they should really have a chance to speak out about whatever needs to be spoken out about. And it may be uncomfortable for the mayor to hear certain things, but there should be that willingness to be able to listen. And that's basically all I want to say today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Edwin Vargas.
Good afternoon, my name is Edwin Vargas. I reside at 119 Random Wood Lane in New Bern, North Carolina. I wrote an article in the Sun Journal on Wednesday, June 24th, for 2020. It's been now two years, and seems like the Sun Journal has made several articles to date about homeless people in Craven County. Currently, there are people sleeping in vans, they're sleeping at Cedar Point Cemetery, they're sleeping behind the old Harris Teeter, and the room at the end and the homeless shelter population within Craven County is only 12 people, okay? And in this letter to the editor, I spelt out the way that this spine city can actually put a package together through HUD to request a continuing of care to actually have HUD fund a homeless shelter. All it has to be done is someone has to put the package together before November of a fiscal year, and that could be done. Because I know RCS has done a bang-up job having people donate money, but the population in New Bern is not shrinking, it's growing. As of 2019, all of Craven County was 102,000. This is now 2020, and that has gone up, and the population of the city has gone up. I've already given this information to the city manager, and pretty soon I'll be touching base with RCS to see if we can put together a package, and possibly either the city can donate a piece of property, because HUD is giving monies to towns all over North Carolina for homeless people. So, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Vargas. Thank you for sending that information to the Board. I had time, and I went up and I looked at that website, and I was really surprised at the cities within North Carolina that have actually applied for these monies and got this money for the homeless people.
There's thousands of dollars, and...
No, millions.
Yeah, but within, for example, New Bern, right now their population is about 30,000.
Right.
Okay. There's nice pieces of properties, and I gave the example on June 24th of the Days Inn, okay? I don't want a homeless shelter to be 24 beds, but it'd be a great idea not only for a homeless shelter, but for American Red Cross disaster area. That way, it's right in the hub of the city. It will actually show the real respect that people have that, you know, I'm very fortunate. I have a home in Brooklyn.
So am I.
And I don't sleep, I see so many people, and it breaks my heart, and I've given them money and food. People sleeping in vans right now, at Lowe's. And RCS, don't get me wrong, they're real strict, but they only have 12 beds.
Yeah. And as I was going to continue to say, I don't know, but I'm quite sure, you know, that with this program, I'm quite sure that the city will, Mr. Hughes, I don't know if you've already taken some steps to start some collaboration with, you know, RCS or our New Bern Housing Authority or even Craven County to, you know, see if this is something that we can all come together on.
My vision would be that RCS should be still there, providing food and everything as a backup, but if the land ordinance for the city has changed from 12, and I was told by Alderman that I didn't have my ducks in a row, okay? I think that the city manager, you Barbara Best, Ms. Harris, and others will work with RCS, we could have a building here that the city doesn't have to pay any money for to put together. I mean, that's, all we have to pay is water, sewer, and to have a place where, you know, if the population in New Bern increases, I would hate to see people still sleeping in vans and cars. And Cedar Point Cemetery, I go by there and give those guys food, the cops are not bothering them, but it breaks my heart that this city, I talked about this Wednesday, June 24th, for 2020. It's now two years, I didn't see not one Alderman or a mayor do anything about this, and I've had this thing out, and it's sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we have Deborah Wayne.
Hi, my name is Deborah Wayne, and I live on a boat in the New Bern Grand Marina.
Can you give us your address, please, ma'am?
Oh, the address of the marina is 134 Craven Street, Craven Street, in New Bern. So I wanted to take a moment to discuss the topic of commercial boating businesses. New Bern is a great place for boating, we have some very fine marinas, lots of boats out there, in fact, we're so crowded, we need more docks for boats. But what, and it's, what we're lacking is the marinas are not allowing charter boat operations anymore. My marina just stopped allowing to do that. So, the opportunity to have visitors go out on the river for a day sail or something like that is pretty much sort of gone, or for locals who don't own a boat and want to get out on a boat, they can't do it. So, I've actually been talking with Sabrina quite a bit, and she's been very great with advice and help. I'm looking for some kind of assistance perhaps from the city to try to work with the marinas to find out why do they not want to allow a commercial charter business in their marina? We're just talking about day trips on little small boats, we're not talking fishing trips or anything like that, but find out what their concerns are, what their issues are. I've been having trouble getting communication going with the marina's owners to get me a straight answer as to why we can't run these businesses. I was running a highly successful Airbnb business on my boats. A lot of visitors came to New Bern to stay on the boats, and they loved it, and they spent all their time in New Bern, spending money and doing all sorts of things, but they all wanted to go out on the water, and I couldn't provide that to them. So they also told me I can no longer run my Airbnb business anymore either, which is unfortunate, because it takes away rooms from the city and it just takes away a great draw for people who are coming to New Bern. So, I just was informed today that possibly my marina will allow one area in a corner of our marina that maybe we can pick passengers up there, but my dock master said it's not really locked in stone yet, so I don't know. Galley Stores, they refuse to allow any kind of commercial business either. So as I say, I would just like to, I don't know what can be done, but something maybe to encourage these, because really, there's no place, we can't run any charters, people have to go to Beaufort or Oriental to get on a boat charter. So if we want to try to keep that kind of business going here in New Bern, I think we need some kind of help of just talking to at least the marina owners and say, what's the issue? Is it insurance, is it liability? Let's talk about it. Do we need more insurance? You know, we'll pay for it, or whatever. I mean, I don't really know that they've said, no, you can't do it. We don't even get answers, so. Sabrina, thank you very much for everything you've done so far. We have, you know, made some progress now on this, hopefully be able to use that one corner there, but in case that still doesn't work out, and also, you know, I think it would be worthwhile to talk to Galley Stores as another marina to offer, you know, we'd love to be able to take people to Per Simmons, drop them up, have them like a lunch or dinner, pick them back up, do a sunset sale, come with a convoli dinner at Per Simmons, I mean, doesn't that sound fantastic to a visitor, you know, or even a local? So, I just, I would just like to put that out there.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Any questions to me on what we do or what is involved or anything like that?
I believe what will happen is, is we're going to take what you said and get together with Alderman Bingle and Foster and see if we can't figure out something or find a partnership with them so that, you know, you have an access to be able to utilize your boat in a commercial capacity.
Yeah, and the other thing I forgot to mention, I'm just going to say real quickly, is that I had been told by my marina that I could keep the boats in the marina, I just can't pick up, you know, in my slip there, so the idea was maybe we'll pick people up at Union Point, which would be fine, I'm good with that alternative, because that's more attractive than going to the dock, which is next to the pump-out station, just so you know where it is. But, so, but I don't know whether it would be okay to pick up at Union Point, whether there's any kind of city ordinance or something that's going to flare up and say, no, you can't do that, or whatever. So I would like to actually say, can we get the approval to pick up and drop off at Union Point?
Absolutely, it'd be discussed, and Alderman Bingle will get back to you on that status.
And the Visitor Center has been really supportive and helpful too, so they, you can talk to them, they're the ones that say they get calls every day looking for boat charters, so, but, okay, no more time, but thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the consent agenda, what's the pleasure of the Board?
I'd like to make a, well, I'd like to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second? We have a motion, second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. The next agenda item is 11, to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to rezone 3601 News Boulevard, Foster?
This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Shelley to come up and make his presentation.
So, this rezoning request is for Mr. Nagoyem at 3601 News Boulevard, this is near the bowling alley skating rink area there, but on the opposite side. The existing zoning is C4 Neighborhood Business District and R6 Residential Split Zoning, we'll see in a second on the map that the actual parcel is split, has two zoning districts on it. They're proposing to, or they're requesting to have it changed to C3 Commercial, and the size is .76 acres approximately, and historically, this parcel was a mobile home park, and that mobile home park has been removed from the site, and now more recently, it's just used for storage related to their tire business next door, who is the owner who is requesting this change for that property. But current, so currently, it's vacant. And this gives you a photograph of the, of the property from the side street, and this is the driveway which goes across the property. The chain link fence is actually across the middle of the property, and the rest of the property fronts to the right off the screen fronts on News Boulevard. So, the, here is the existing zoning, and if you can see, the little square area called site has, and it's cross-hatched, is the entire parcel, where it shows the front along the road is currently the C4 zoning, and the back is the R15, or R10 zoning, sorry, R6 zoning. So, the neighborhood, C4 Neighborhood Business District is established as a district in which the principal use of land is to provide for the retailing of goods and services to the nearby residential neighborhoods. For the R6 Residential District, the specific intent of this district is to encourage continued use of the land for residential purposes, for single-two and multifamily dwellings with 6,000 square foot minimum lots, and certain compatible non-residential uses. And then the C3 portion of the site, or the proposed C3 District, is a district for offices, personal services, and the retailing of durable and convenience goods, and this district will generally be located on the city's major radial roads, because these districts will be located on high-volume traffic arteries, ample off-street parking control traffic movement, and an appropriate appearance includes suitable planting are to be provided. And so in general, the uses that are allowed in the proposed C3 District are single-family residential, multifamily residential, high-traffic retail, car wash, restaurants, offices, enclosed storage, gasoline sales, and automobile sales and service. Whereas, surrounding the property to the north is Commercial District, the C4 Neighborhood Business District. To the south, bounded by Midget Avenue, is Residential R15, that's beyond the right-of-way. To the east, it's bounded by News Boulevard, and vacant land is C4, also on the other side of the right-of-way. And to the west is the existing mobile home park, R6. And as far as utilities are concerned, all city-provided utilities and services are available to the general area. With regard to the regional land use plan, the subject property has high suitability for development, and is shown developed with a mix of residential and commercial uses. There are no known environmental hazards on this property. According to the North Carolina Flood Plane Mapping Program, the property is not located within the 100-year or 500-year flood line. So the recommendation of staff is to rezon the subject property to C3 Commercial, and that is consistent with the character of the adjacent land use to the north, the existing outdoor storage, tire storage and service center, which is a C3 permitted use, and also commercial zoning classifications to the north and east across News Boulevard. The site is separated by adjacent residential to the south by Midget Avenue, which is a public street. The adjacent mobile home park to the west will be screened by an opaque buffer in any commercial development scenario through the site plan process required by the zoning ordinance. Staff has found the proposed rezoning to be in the public interest and consistent with land, city land use and transportation plans, due to the parcel being split zone currently and moderately suited for residential development. Staff has no objection to approval of the requested zoning.
Question? Can I? Matt, I have a couple of questions. Could you put your slots back up, I want to go there. I'm really confused about the C4 and the C3, and why we've got C4, there's no C3 anywhere around this, it's like we're throwing in a new zoning category in the middle of, C3 is nowhere else. I don't know, I'm confused about the C4. Obviously, he was operating under C4/R6, I think it was, so why not just stay with a straight C4 usage? Why introduce another type zoning level in there if the C4 allowed them to do what they were doing there anyway?
So, the proposed allowed uses includes enclosed storage, so I believe he's interested in...
So, there's no enclosed storage in C4?
That's correct.
The C4 residential would allow him to have the residential part, high-traffic retail, car wash restaurants, offices, so the only thing it doesn't allow him to have is enclosed storage?
Yes.
So, enclosed storage?
More or less, yes.
Like these storage units that people are building everywhere? Is that kind of the idea?
Yes.
And so you have to be in a C3?
That's correct.
Would that be spot zoning? Or considered spot zoning?
That sounds like that's a legal question.
Sorry, but you know, that's been the buzzword for many years.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm from the old school, if you haven't noticed.
Yeah, the standard is whether it is reasonable in light of the surrounding zones. I think you make a good point that there is no C3 elsewhere, and as you know from all of our prior hearings, once it is rezoned, any use that's allowed in a C3 can go there, a gas station could go there. So C3 is our highest burdened commercial use. MLK Corridor in front of the mall is C3, that's what a typical C3 looks like. You know, I think this is, it's in that zone where I think reasonable minds could disagree as to whether it is consistent with the surrounding area or not. It does stand out as a little island that is unlike the R6 on two sides, and certainly unlike the C4 that's all around it.
All around it, across the street, whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's my only hesitation right now is that it kind of seems unusual, and once you start down that path, then all the neighbors are going to be knocking at our door to be C3. I have that feeling.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I have a question, the, if we're looking back at your map, the site that's to the northwest, I guess, I can't, it says something tire, it's hard to read.
Tony's Tire.
That used to be a gas station, so we're saying that it's C4, would it have been probably grandfathered in?
It would have been, yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll just bring that up to say that that used to be a gas station next door to it, so...
And again, it's not so much the issue is that are we going to start allowing this, you know, we've had a lot of instances come before us in this past year where people kind of want to plop a zone in the middle where everything else around it is nothing like it. And I do like to be consistent, I want to make sure that they have the ability to do as much as possible. I, maybe there's something wrong with our zones, you know, if it allows everything except, to me, I don't think that's burdensome, having an enclosed storage space. I think a gas station or something like that would be more, you know, in the line of more commercial. So is it possible that we have to relook at our land use and say a storage facility is not as invasive, or, I don't know what the word would be, to the neighborhood as something else, and put it into a different classification, rather than change the zoning to fit one specific use?
So, if you were to do that, then you would of course change that for every area where it...
Correct.
So, I suppose you're suggesting C4 would be appropriate, but to add enclosed storage to C4, then that would allow enclosed storage throughout every area.
But not the higher, higher, you know, commercial uses that C3 would have?
Oh, right, yes.
You see what I'm saying? It's still, since you have that all around it, my concern is that we're introducing a new zoning, that it doesn't even touch it anywhere, it's not even within any of the boundaries when you look at the map, I don't see C3 anywhere close by, so I just think it's kind of unusual to have that there. You've got R15, which is higher residential zoning, that's one of our higher residential zonings in R15, right next door to that, you've got R6 behind it, R15 behind it, and then on C4, I feel not very motivated to want to plop a C3 in there. That's just my conversation. You're done? Yeah.
Alderman Best? This is, they're proposing to have this as an enclosed storage unit?
Yes.
Okay, now maybe I've got my bearings off, but I think right down the street there is a storage, right down the street, isn't it?
Right just before, right after coming off of Racetrack Road.
Right, so it's right down the street, so...
So either that's in the C3, or it is also a grandfathered use.
Yeah, okay. I knew it was some storage units out there.
Matt, can you clarify, are you saying that if we were looking at a list of C4 next to the one that says C3, the only difference is enclosed storage?
Well, not exactly. There's a lot of other uses that aren't necessarily relevant, so to say, but, let's see, so we talked about in C4, and we don't have a list there for you.
Well, while Matt's looking to, one of the other significant differences is the setbacks and the screening, the neighborhood, the C4 typically adds a heavier burden for plantings and setbacks, because they're oftentimes adjacent to residential uses, so you get more of a neighborhood feel to it, as opposed to a big box store feel.
And the idea that was mentioned in this description under C4 Neighborhood Oriented Businesses as opposed to Arterial Oriented Businesses. So, you can see that the list here is, for C3, are things that, not just... So you can see that the list here is for C-3 are things that not just the neighborhood would be using necessarily. Car washes and restaurants, those typically have a larger draw. Smaller restaurants, maybe so, or small, like corner groceries, which don't exist anymore, right? Those would have been neighborhood-oriented.
Have you had any feedback from the community with changing from a Ford to a C-?
No, so tonight is the opportunity at the hearing?
No, just before this come about, did you send out any information to share with the neighborhoods which are in...what's getting ready to take place?
So there's always a public notice for rezoning?
Correct.
But so tonight is the opportunity at the public hearing. It did go before the Planning and Zoning Board, and they had unanimous agreement with this change as well.
Okay.
Does there any discussion? Any more discussion?
At this time, I'd like to take a moment to open up a public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to come and speak in regards to item number 11 for adopting the ordinance to rezone 3601 Neuse Boulevard. Come up to the podium, state your name.
Deborah Lynn, and I already spoke. I would say, listening to what they're proposing to do, a storage space, I think we badly need storage spaces. So I would like to encourage you to figure out something so that they can build it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead and close.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to close the hearing.
Second.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance to...
Yeah, wait, you have to call for the motion.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing? All opposed, same?
Go ahead.
I'd like to adopt an ordinance to rezone 3601 to a C-3 Neuse Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, just as just a matter of what I always do, I will be voting no, just because I don't like the idea of dropping in a zone, just as I've taught before, spot zoning. I'm just against that. I'm not against storage or anything else like that, but more on principle than matter.
Madam Clerk, we'd like a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
No. All right, next item on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to initially...oh, zone 3412 Old Airport Road.
Do we need a statement of zoning consistency on that? It's not only the agenda, but it's in our package.
Should be.
Okay, I must not have a...
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion when you adopt a statement of zoning consistency for 3601 Neuse Boulevard.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle?
Alderman Bingle? Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 12, Foster.
Item number 12 is to conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance to initially zone 3412 Old Airport Road. And we'd like to ask Mr. Shelley to come back up and make this presentation.
Okay, these...it's actually, there are going to be two of these, both with similar situation on Old Airport Road. These are two properties that were recently annexed by you about a month ago. And we need to establish the zoning for those. Currently, there is no zoning for them in the county, and so we are suggesting that the designation be the R-8 Residential District. That is consistent with the properties that are near and adjacent to it, as well as, let's see. Your packet shows R-8 is immediately to the rear, and the other areas, the other properties to the left and right are still in the county. So there is no other zoning for those. So that's...we're suggesting R-8 for this first one.
I have a question. Mr. Davis, is it okay if we handle both at the same time?
These are a little different, so let's keep them separate, just for the record.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing to consider adopting the ordinance to initially zone 3412 Old Airport Road.
Make motion and close here.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
This...I don't have the updated, so is there a statement of consistency as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion that we approve the statement that we...how would you phrase this? That we would adopt a statement of consistency to rezone or to initially zone 3412 Old Airport Road. Is that correct?
Was that public hearing closed?
I'm sorry?
Was the public hearing closed?
I think the vote we took was to close the public hearing.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure.
Yeah, the vote we took to close the public hearing.
The vote we took was to close the public hearing, instead of adding, she called roll.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry.
Hey, I'm fresh. Okay, so we closed the public hearing, and now we need to do...can we...we have to do the motion to adopt it, and then the statement of consistency, but I don't have it on my paper, so...
So Alderman Astor, are you making the motion to adopt?
No, go ahead, you got it.
No, go ahead, and I'll do the consistency again.
I'm gonna have to find it on my paper.
Number 12.
I got you. I'd like to make a motion, I think... I'd like to make a motion that we rezone the property initially.
Which one is it?
12.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance for initially zoning 3412 Old Airport Road to...
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle?
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
So I make my motion about the statement of consistency. You know what?
We got it.
Do I get a second?
Certainly, or a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
All right, agenda. Item number 13, Foster.
Okay, the next item is to consider a resolution approving the sale of 2502 New Bern Avenue.
Wait, wait. No, 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 number 13.
13. Yeah, we have...
We're just...we're just...all over tonight, I thought.
There was a full moon last night.
So the next item is to conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance to initially zone 3436 Old Airport Road. Mr. Shelley?
Yes, hello again. So this is similar to the previous one. If you look at the map in your packet, you can see it too is bounded on the rear by R-8 zoning, and there is no zoning around it otherwise. And so we recommend this be adopted as initially zoned as R-8 Residential District.
Does the board have any questions?
Is this a public?
All right, I'd like to open up a public hearing to consider adopting the ordinance to initiate zone for 3436 Old Airport Road. Do you have anything? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Make a motion and close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Eyes?
Eyes.
All opposed? No, you have it?
All right, let me see if I can get it right this time. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting an ordinance to zone 3436 Old Airport Road to R-8.
Second.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, sir, well done.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle? Bingle, who are today's the day?
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes. Hello, turn.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the statement of zoning consistency with adoption plans for 3436 Old Airport Road.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
All right, item number 14.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving the sale of 2502 New Bern Avenue. Lorenzo Grist has submitted a bid of $5,000 for the purchase of this property. The bid was advertised, but no upset bids received. The partial is a vacant .107 acre partial, and the bid represents the full tax value. If the sale is approved, after reimbursing the city for the cost of advertising, the city will receive approximately $757.54, and the county will receive approximately $4,242.46 from the proceeds.
Is there any discussion?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sale of 2502 New Bern Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, I'd like a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
All right, item number 15.
Next item is to consider a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 2410 Georgia Avenue. Jimmy McGowan has submitted an offer of $8,000 for this property. The vacant .34 acre partial has a tax value of $15,620, and the offer represents more than 50% of the value. The property was acquired jointly by the city and county in 2018 through tax foreclosure. The unpaid taxes are due to Crave County at this time, including interest, penalties and costs, was $2,203.83. Unpaid taxes, interest and penalties due to the city was $6,685.95.
Does the board have any discussion?
If there's none, Mayor Protem Harris, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving to initiate the upset bid process for 2410 Georgia Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Item number 16.
Next item is to consider a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 801 Chautauqua Lane. Black Bear Real Estate has offered to purchase this property for $12,000. The vacant .34 acre partial has a tax value of $15,000, and the offer represents more than 50% of that value. The property was acquired by the city and county through tax foreclosure in 2019. It's estimated that if the property is sold for the initial bid, the county will receive $3,655.21, and the city will receive $8,344.79 from the proceeds.
Is there any discussion on the board?
There's no discussion. Mayor Protem Harris, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 801 Chautauqua Lane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, we can have...
Foster, let me ask you a question. Did you say that the city would receive $8,000 from this sale?
That's correct.
Well, how come there's such a big difference between what the city on this one and what the county had on the last one?
Probably tax, it has to do with taxes or demolition expenses.
Usually, we don't...usually, the city has a large lien on these lots. But those liens don't have the same priority as taxes. So in most of these sales, when you're selling a lot for $2,000, the city may be owed a couple hundred dollars in taxes, the county's owed a thousand in taxes, but the city would have an inferior lien for five or 10 or 15,000 for demolition costs. But that lots amount were $2,000, so we lose our lien for the old costs. This is a rare case.
And there's no way that we can recoup our portion of the demolition from the county's portion or something?
No, sir, no, sir.
We have to tear it down, we have to mow the grass, and then we have to give the county all the money.
That's right, yes, sir, by statute, yeah. Taxes have the first priority lien.
What we could do, though, is we could amend our, you know, could we amend our policy to say that we...that the opening bid has to be half the value plus cover of demolition?
Well, you can certainly do that, okay. We always come back to reality.
Right. Will somebody buy?
Will somebody pay $10,000 for a $2,000 lot?
Right. And the idea was just to get it into hands, that somebody will do something with, and it's not sitting there.
I understand, I understand that. It's just, it's a shame that we have all of these expenses in it, and we end up with $800.
But we would have continued to have those expenses.
I understand all that.
They're good a bad on both sides, aren't they?
I'm sorry, we were...
No, you're fine. Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, if we can have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle? Bingle, I'm gonna get it right tonight.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
All right, item number 17.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding, membership agreement with Triangle J Council of Governments for Clean Water Education Partnership Services. Back in 2001, the city began its stormwater program to comply with state and federal requirements under the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Program. Since the program's inception, the city has utilized a clean water education partnership to assist with meeting the public education outreach requirements under the MS4 permit. The cost of this service is shared among participating local governments and is based on population. New Bern's cost share is currently $3,281 annually.
Does the board have any questions?
Madam Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding slash membership agreement with Triangle J Council of Governments for Clean Water Education Partnership Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item number 18.
Okay, next item is to consider a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with RHA Health Services Incorporated. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Gallagher to come forward and make this presentation.
Thank you. Currently, the New Bern Police Department is not unlike many other agencies throughout the country in that our service demand includes the unfortunate situation in which we deal with persons in crisis, generally speaking, those that are suffering from mental illness, substance abuse and other issues. One of the strategies the New Bern Police Department is addressing is partnering with trained professionals in mental health evaluation, in which is called the co-responder program. In this particular relationship, the New Bern Police Department and the trained clinicians will work in partnership in addressing those situations where we can divert persons in crisis away from the criminal justice system and into the mental health system where services are... much more appropriate for the case in point. And this relationship will serve not only our agency, our officers, but also the community at large. We believe this is a win-win. We have a structure in place that will allow us to do this and we are simply asking that the board support the memorandum of understanding with RHA so that we can move this forward and also seek additional grants to continue the program long-term. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, tell me, question I have is how would you, how would you handle, I'll just say maybe teenagers underage? Is this gonna be a part of this program as well?
If a person is in crisis, their age is not really as relevant in terms of the services RHA can provide. However, there is maybe some nuanced changes between the relationship between a patient as a juvenile and the, and the parent. Obviously, that relationship doesn't go away. But the services are easily referred through the mental health system that RHA can provide in terms of the client regardless of the age.
Chief, I know it says that it's fully funded through RHA, but are there any resources that would be required from the city in order to make the partnership work?
The only resources that we are providing currently is office space, which includes the ability for them to have access to the internet. And we have already completed that. We do have office space and the needed infrastructure for their staff to work out of our building. That's an important component. It's the synergy between the co-responding team, the officer, and the civilian clinician working in partnership.
And would this also cover, we heard tonight about, you know, our homeless population and we know some of that is due to mental illness. I don't know it's in crisis, but it's definitely mental illness. Sometimes it turns to crisis. Does it cover that as all, as well, or is this just a, are these singular situations?
No. In fact, the co-responder program i- is a great resource specifically for the homeless that are suffering from not only mental illness but substance abuse.
Great.
Is this a twenty-four hour day, seven day, or week type response if needed?
No, our program does not have the resources to provide that type of coverage, generally speaking. We have roughly forty hours a week that we're covering. If we can get this program to advance, it would be great if we had a twenty-four hour opportunity.
So the mental health professional could actually respond to the scene and discuss or have conversations with the person in crisis?
Yes, that's the value of the co-responder program is the mental health professional is at the scene so that the triaging occurs in real time. At the same time, the police officers there providing security to render the scene safe and allowing the mental health professional to do what they do best is evaluate the client and make the best possible recommendation for treatment.
Oh, good. I hope that you can find funding to make it a twenty-four hour day.
I agree with you.
It'd be nice if they, two o'clock in the morning, somebody's in crisis, you could have someone come out and talk, whatever. And this, this will also be a way for your officers to debrief with a mental health professional as well if needed.
That is correct. The New Bern Police Department now has a peer support program, which we implemented late last year. And the co-responder clinicians are part of that and can assist in terms of, as you indicated, the debrief of our staff or to address the mental health needs of our officer when needed.
Good.
Chief Gallagher, I just want to say, you know, the initiative that you're taking within the police department to, you know, meet the needs of some of these I, you know, issues that we have within our community is very important. I appreciate that. And I agree with my colleague that, you know, getting data six months from now based on that program that, you know, maybe the next board will see, actually, you know, truly see the value in it and there's funding or partnerships or some grants to continue that service because that is a key to, like you said, and I appreciate the words of saying, pulling people away from the criminal justice system and pulling them into the mental health. I think that's important. So thank you for that leadership.
Well, I'd be remiss if I, if I did not acknowledge the fact that this was not a program that I initiated. This was a program that began before I showed up and I was lucky to have the staff to help carry this forward. This program did exist in my previous agency. It was one that was very successful. And I'm thankful for the previous administration and the police department and the staff to make this work.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, Chief, I got one more question for you. So right now, if, if one of your officers will have to respond to a call and they show up, it's a, it's a mental case. How, do you have someone currently on the police department that can handle it or does when your support system kicks in, they're the ones that actually handle the mental cases?
Well, the baseline training requirements through BLET and state requirements is very minimal. All police officers have a certain level of training in dealing with persons in crisis. It steps up from there and most of our uniform patrol staff are what is called CIT certified. This is a rigorous advanced training, forty hours testable material that our staff, most are successfully completed. But that being said, having forty hours of additional CIT, crisis intervention training, skill sets does not make an expert in mental health. It does provide our officers with more ability to deal with persons in crisis. The trained professionals is really where we want to take this over the top and provide wraparound services for citizens that need it.
Thank you. Is there any more questions?
Chief, what's your, what's the protocol? If you, one o'clock in the morning and you have a citizen that's obviously having an issue, what do you, what do you do between one o'clock in the morning and eight o'clock in the evening, I mean, at eight o'clock the next morning where you can actually get them some help? What happens to the person?
Well, through the county and through social services, there are clinicians that we can bring clients to. There are opportunities to, through the magistrate system, to seek an involuntary committal for treatment. So those, those exist today. They existed before we started this program. It just makes the process more cumbersome and longer to get to the final destination point. Having the clinician onsite immediately just beats the process up.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure, the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with RHA Health Services Inc. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingo?
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item nineteen.
Thank you.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a water and sewer use agreement for forty-one fourteen Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. This time, I would like to ask Mr. Hughes come up and make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Harris and members of the board. What you have before you is recommendation to approve a standard water and sewer use agreement with the proprietors of forty-one fourteen Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The owners of the property are planning to develop that site as a multi-family site apartment complex. As such, the requested demand for water and wastewater capacity exceeds fifteen thousand gallons per day. And per section seventy-four of our city ordinances, any new development within the city that requests a capacity, a water and sewer capacity in excess of fifteen thousand gallons a day is required to enter into a formal water and sewer use agreement. This is our standard agreement used for that purpose. Staff has reviewed the infrastructure in the area, has no problems meeting the commitment that is requested from the developer and requesting approval of the agreement.
You don't have to ask him. Where's this property located?
On the corner of MLK and Greenleaf Cemetery Road.
Oh, God.
Or just off the corner, I think. It's not actually the corner property, but kind of corner.
Is it the vacant lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Jordan, what is our current capacity availability right now?
So at our wastewater treatment plant, we have a permitted capacity of six and a half million gallons a day and we're running just under four million gallons a day now. So we have well over two and a half million gallons of capacity. At our water treatment plant, we have the capacity to produce and deliver about nine million gallons of potable water a day. And we're currently consuming just over three and a half million gallons a day. So plenty of water capacity and sewer capacity.
Thank you. For Protem, if there's no more questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a water and sewer use agreement for forty-one fourteen Dr. MLK Jr. Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, I'd like to have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twenty.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a sewer use agreement for forty-seven twenty-one Highway seventy east. Mr. Hughes has this one as well.
Mayor Protem Harris, members of the board, very similar to the last item that the owners of forty-seven twenty-one Highway seventy east are proposing. The city requesting sewer service. This is a parcel that is currently located outside of the city of New Bern municipal limits. Per section seventy-four of our code ordinances, anybody that requests water or wastewater use or service outside of our municipal limits is required to enter into our standard water and sewer use agreement. Staff has reviewed the infrastructure in proximity to forty-seven twenty-one Highway seventy east and has no issue with committing the capacity for the proposed development, which is a small commercial site, I think, a medical clinic.
Will they have to annex that?
Yes, ma'am. That is a condition of the sewer use agreement. They will have to petition the board for annexation. They have to ask.
I thought that was-
Okay, so where is this located?
It's on Highway seventy east. I'm trying to think what it's close to. It, it, there's, there's a strip there on the west side of Highway seventy, Alderman Astor, that is got, we've got three or four parcels already that have kind of been annexed in the same, in the same fashion in a row.
Is it the Dollar, no, not the Dollar General at one time, that one over there. It's not close to that.
It's currently a vacant parcel, if I'm not mistaken.
Can call me, call me.
That's a fairly good ways down, seventy, right? Seventy east. Is it past the animal hospital?
Bobby, it's past the RV center that's in the fork of the road. It's just paths out on the right.
And what else do we have in there that's annexed?
We've annexed a piece that I don't think is developed, which will be a cell center for a contractor. I think they have yet to build on and there is probably four or five other pieces contiguous that are already covered under the sewer use agreement. When they get ready to build, they will annex as well.
Fash, has this, has police and fire looked at this and they see any type of issues with these little annexations like this? I know they're sitting here for annexation, but still.
It, it hasn't come up for annexation yet. They, they probably have not seen this yet, but if it comes up for annexation, they will review it at that time.
So should we, we have to act on this before they can annex it, right? And what happens if we approve this and, but not approve the annexation?
They can't have-
They're a sewer customer.
Okay.
They are a sewer customer?
Yes, ma'am.
It's at an outside ready?
Yes, this guarantees sewer, but there's no guarantee that they'll be annexed. That's in your discretion.
And the reason I'm saying that is because I thought that, and this is going back probably to about two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, you know, we kind of changed things to say we would not allow the use of our sewer system without annexation because here we are. I mean, we did it for Trent Woods that time. That was a major project, but after that, we decided that we would not allow that. Our capacity was our capacity and that we would not allow our sewer, which our taxpayers pay for and the infrastructure and the capital expense and letting other people use it because sewer, people can't develop without sewer.
Well, why, why would we, I guess if what you're saying is if you don't think you want to annex it, then tonight you would vote no and not give them sewer.
Correct. Correct, but they, they are, I want to make sure they're going to be required. There's no reason we wouldn't want to annex them.
Well, yes, there is. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why public safety wouldn't want to man ax. I mean, why are you wanting to try? Too far out might be one of the issues. One single-
Give them our sewer.
Why? When you sell them the sewer, you get out of, out of city sewer rates.
So maybe I can help the conversation a little bit. Several years ago, we modified one of our, we have two very distinct sewer coverage areas in, in the township seven area, the James City area. But one, we, we call our conventional sewer system, which we connect you to our conventional sewer system. That is, that requires the use of our sewer use agreement, requires petition for annexation. The other area is the area that is covered under the James City step system, the small pump system. Connection to that system is part of just that old county system. It's not-
So is that what their connection is to?
We, we modified the, there were some public safety concerns at one point. At one point, there was a, a buffer basically along both sides of Highway seventy where if you, if you wanted sewer on either side of Highway seventy or adjacent to Highway seventy, it came with, we were trying to connect you to the conventional system and it came with requirement for annexation. There were some public safety concerns about the parcels on the east side of Highway seventy, on the river side of Highway seventy. We modified that coverage area probably three years ago to exclude the parcels on the east side of seventy. We developed capacity for those remaining parcels if they ever should need to connect, to connect to the step system. And then we basically said if we're going to try to annex anything as part of the sewer system connections, we will do that on the west side only. And in that, we've got two or three parcels that are kind of staggered along Highway seventy on the west side, very close to the current city limits on, as Wilcox. As you come down Waterscape Way and hit Wilcox, these parcels are very close to the existing city limits. Only thing that separates them is a little strip of NC railroad right of way and some very small private property too. So these are-
So is it about on the corner?
Not far down, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we did the same thing for a property that was over there not too long ago that we authorized sewer, but didn't annex them. The church, correct?
Yes, sir. That, that was a board decision.
Yeah.
We did not annex that?
We did not annex.
Their tax exempt. No tax base.
Oh, their tax exempt.
I, I would, are they in a hurry? Because I would like to have for police and fire to look at these properties and see what type of burden this is going to create for response times. I know down near Wilcox Road is probably getting beyond the fire department's mileage. I mean, if they're, if they're not in a terrible hurry, I'd like to continue this until the next meeting, give police and fire an opportunity to look at it and see what kind of a burden it's going to create on our public safety system.
Just to, hopefully I'm allowed to speak. I don't think us approving them to get sewer is going to affect whether police and fire are going to be able to analyze whether we, whether they would suggest to annex into the city. I think regardless, they would still become a commercial customer for water and sewer. And, you know, obviously we want the tax value, but if we still have the ability, the next time that they come and say no and still have a water and sewer customer. Alderman Odom?
Yep, that's what I was going to say, first of all, so thank you. Bobby, the second thing is I'm, I'm just looking at an aerial and it looks like to me that from Thurman Road Fire Station to the back of Blue Water Rise is further than this would be by going up Thurman and out on Highway seventy. If you look at road miles, it's road, it's road miles, right, not the-
It's road miles.
Yeah, I think, according to this, I think it would be closer. But I agree with Mayor Protem that I think tonight, regardless, I mean, if we approve this tonight, they're going to have to come back at a later date and say, please annex this, and that could be in the interim. Police and fire could look and say, we don't want to do this.
They will follow through on that step for annexation?
It's required in the agreement.
It's a requirement in the agreement, okay. I just feel better about that. Again, you know, I'm real protective about our sewer, as we should be. Develop, I want to make sure we have capacity as we develop inside our city limits. And, you know, if everybody says, hey, you can go to New Bern and get their sewer and you don't have to annex- And, you know, if everybody says, hey, you can go to New Bern and get their sewer, and you don't have to annex that concern.
And, and I would nothing, I would rather do than sell water and sewer. There's no doubt about it. But there's nothing worse than, uh, uh, trying to respond to an emergency. And this one's in the city, this one's out the city, this was in, this was out, two doors down.
Bridge to.
I agree, and I, I was against the whole thing over there as well, but I just, you know, I, I, I'll agree to the agreement tonight, but I certainly want recommendation from public safety before we talk about annexation.
Jordan, right, I mean, who, who serves, doesn't New Bern service, fire department service the area right now?
If it's in the city, the fire department will service it, yeah.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, and besides, you know, we're getting a water and sewer customer, and those rates are double. They're outside the city.
I under, I understand, but.
Well, they might not want to come inside. They might not want our water and sewer if they decide not to come in the city.
You see, we're building capacity. We're, you know, we just had a, you know, a apartment building, and what we may do in the redevelopment area with more apartments and other things, which is going to require more capacity. And while, yes, we've got plenty of capacity, our sewer capacity is lower than what our water capacity is, you know, in terms of, of number of gallons, and I don't want to use it up for someone, and then we have somebody in our city limits trying to develop and build things, and we get short of capacity, then we have to tax our citizens to enlarge the facility, to make more capacity.
I understand what you're saying, and, and I concur with you.
And I'm not going to vote against this, but I just want everybody to understand it's important that we keep that in mind.
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and, and I agree with you, but I'm quite, I, I trust Jordan's judgment. I don't think he would be standing here before us and giving us this information if it wasn't feasible with our water and sewer system the way it is right now.
Yes, ma'am. So, so in these areas in Township Seven, we have created the capacity, the ability to serve the lots that we've identified in these two separate coverage areas. And we feel very comfortable with the capacity in these coverage areas and the ability to provide sewer service on either of the two systems in these two coverage areas where we identified, we have coverage of the two systems. Uh, so, so the ability to serve in that, in limited capac, we're, we're not going to have a capacity issue in that, in that coverage area. We've identified the lots, we have the ability to serve, and we created the coverage areas, and anybody that comes to, as long as they meet some, some general guidelines of the amount of capacity they're seeking, we will, we will feel comfortable in giving them that much capacity. Uh, the, the issue of whether is a good fit to be a, an expansion of the New Bern Municipal Limits, that, that's a, a separate discussion all in itself, and we will certainly circle back. Uh, sometimes those conversations come very fast on the heels of the sewer use agreement. Sometimes they're ready to build, and they're, 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 they'll be there tomorrow morning in Development Services with all the information they need to start the annexation petition process. Sometimes you may go a couple of years before they come back to you, and they're ready to build and ready to go down that road. So you, you may not see them next week or next month at a meeting. Uh, it may be at some time in the, in the future.
Is the infrastructure out there on, across front of the property?
Yes, sir.
Jordan? I appreciate you, and I just, I wanted to, um, say that, um, Bingle, I understand your opinion too, as well as, you know, even if we do have capacity now, you know, we still have to make sure that we're protecting our residents and our city, even if, you know, it's an income that can come in in regards to usage, because, you know, at the end of the day, we want to be able to provide, you know, sewer and water, but we also want you to be annexed in so we can, you know, receive tax dollars. So I do appreciate what you're saying. Was there any other discussion?
I, I trust what Jordan says. If he says we've got capacity, uh, he wouldn't be here if we didn't. So I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a sewer use agreement for forty-seven twenty-one Highway seventy east.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Berning, can you give us a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle?
Alderman Bingle, yes. Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty-one.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a North Carolina statewide emergency management mutual aid and assistance agreement revision for twenty twenty-one. The last statewide mutual aid agreement was revised in twenty twenty-one and approved by the governing board on August tenth of that last year. The state has requested that the agreement be updated annually. There are no changes in the agreement or the city's designated representatives this year. The agreement meets theme of requirements for local governments giving or receiving help in the event of a declared disaster.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the North Carolina statewide emergency management mutual aid and assistance agreement revision to twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if we can have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two.
Next item is consider a resolution approving the classification pay plan for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. Annually, the board adopts this pay plan for the upcoming fiscal year. The board is asked to consider a resolution approving the plan for FY twenty-three, which increases the salary range by two point five percent.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the classification pay plan for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if we can have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle?
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty-three.
Next item is consider an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. Ms. Ostrom will cover this for us.
Good evening. As part of the budget process, the board unanimously adopts, um, the amended and scheduled fees and charges, uh, in part identifying one place all the fees charged by the city. The city, the fees identified in the schedule are included in the regulations for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three and will be effective July first, two thousand twenty-two. At the May twenty-fourth Board of Alderman meetings, the Board of Alderman recommended that increase in marketing fees be removed, which has been nonmandated reflected in the schedule facing charges presented today.
Thank you. Board, any questions?
No, just to note that I would like them brought back, um, you know, for the first of the year with the next board or whatever, and, uh, proper notice be given to all current people who lease right now, knowing that the rates are going to increase. I would be in favor of the increased rates. I just think they needed notice.
Alderman Odom?
Uh, Foster or Kim, um, some of the cemetery fees, I see they've gone up, which is appropriate. I'm just curious why some of them are double resident versus non-resident, and some of them are not.
We're, we're working slowly to get that where, uh, city res, the non-resident rate is double the city rate, and that's more in line with what we're seeing with competitors in that cemetery industry, not only municipal, but also private industry, so.
So we're?
The double, the double rate is, is the appropriate.
The double rate is the goal?
For non-residents.
And it's, we felt like it was just too much to go up the whole amounts of these other ones?
That's correct. We have been working on increasing this over the last several years, and we will continue to do this, but, um, really don't want to give a stick of shock, uh, to those that are in need of this service all at one time. So that's why we've been doing this incrementally over the last few years.
Thank you.
So any other discussion?
I, I just had an out of bounds question maybe, but, so is it the deceased person has to be a city resident or the family burying the person have to be a city resident? Just curious.
It's the, the fee.
The, the deceased, yes.
Has to be the city resident, to get the rate, not to be laid away.
That's correct.
Correct, okay, thank you, sorry. Any further discussion? Make sure we're done. It's a pleasure of the board. Madam Mayor Protim, I'd like to make a motion to amend the schedule of fees and charges.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, or twenty-four.
Next item is consider the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to present this.
The city manager presented the proposed budget to the board on May tenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two. A public hearing was conducted on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Although no comments were received, the board voted against, meaning to not receive a seven percent increase for the board ultimate salaries. Um, the increase has been removed from the budget, um, in the amount six thousand three hundred and one dollars.
So board, have any questions or discussion?
Kim, I have a question. I, I don't have, uh, my budget book in front of me, but on the capital or the, uh, annual debt service, that report, uh, if my memory serves me correct, it's gone up. The manager's recommendation for this year has gone up quite a bit. I think it was almost double. Do you, either of you remember?
You want to use my book? I have it.
It, it's whichever, whichever page the annual debt service is on. I had a note to ask the question. I just failed to bring the book. It's the debt service for the year. And it's not going to change whether I'm going to vote on it or not, so I guess you can just tell me afterwards, but I was curious because it was, was a significant amount. Kim, can you look that up, Kim? There, there was just a, okay.
You got some theme music?
Thank you.
Yeah, well, the, the total amount, the debt service on page two twenty-six is two point four three eight one sixty. And if my memory serves me correctly, it was one point something this year. And I didn't think it would be the elevator debt service because we haven't moved forward that project for this fiscal year yet. Right. So we're financing it before the project's complete?
Um, we budget for it.
Because it's in the next year's budget. That starts July one.
Yeah, well, the funds are uncovered, correct?
Yeah, it'll be complete before the end of the fiscal year.
But we won't make any payments on that. So we're saying, we're, we're doubling, starting July one, we're going to double our debt service based off this budget for a project that they've just poured the footings for. That's why I don't think it's the ele, the elevator. I think it's something else. I don't know what. You can, you can find out and just tell us later, but, um, that was one that definitely stood out.
Stood out too.
Was it the Stanley White?
No, that one.
Same situation.
Yeah.
Would you just be able to email us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any other discussion? And what would be the pleasure of the board for item twenty-four?
I make a motion we adopt the budget ordinance for FY twenty-two twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle?
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item twenty-five.
Next item is consider an ordinance to amend and restate the rates for the consumption of electricity applicable to the street lighting schedule thirty-two dash A. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Bouchard to come up and present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Protim Harris, members of the board. Uh, tonight, I have before you a change to electric lighting's rate schedule thirty-two A. It's a hit. We have a handful of lighting schedules. This particular schedule is exclusive to the city of New Bern as a customer. Uh, they're the only customer on this rate, and what I'm proposing to do is make obsolete and retire, uh, lighting products that are no longer available to us, which are the old incandescent type of lights, the high-pressure sodium mercury vapor. Those type of, of products are no longer available, and I'm suggesting that we consider LED products, which we are installing right now, and I have a rate set for those products. It'll, it'll have a positive effect on, pardon me, on the electric revenues, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, of which will, this will be expensed to the city, and public works at budgeting for that increase over time.
Charlie, are you, um, obviously you're taking the initiative so that there won't be any one-offs of individuals coming here to kind of, um, analyze all of the lighting system because you're going to be switching them out, correct? So we probably won't be receiving any more people needing to get their light fixed in their area.
Correct. As these re, as these lights, uh, fail and, and retire due to attrition, will we be replacing them with these new products?
So it won't be all at once? It's, okay.
No, ma'am. We've already got a head start on this, and we've been replacing, um, the new products throughout the city for the last year. We're just getting to the point now where we're updating the rate schedule, so we, we have a good rate to charge.
Okay, so the other question I had is, when someone comes and says that their light needs to be fixed, that is a, a fee that is to the city, not to the customer, correct?
We, we don't charge a fee to, to fix lights, and there's several different types.
It's to install. It's to install light?
Not necessarily. We, we charge a, a monthly rate to customers for area lights, and we charge a monthly rate that apply to the other rate schedules. Most of them apply to the city, street, city streetlights. So if you want a yard in your, you want a light in your backyard, we'll install that for you, and then we charge you a monthly fee.
Okay, but there's no fee that goes to the customer for what, for us replacing because we're taking care of it?
Correct, that's all built into the monthly fee.
Okay, I just wanted to get that right. So board, any questions?
I have one question for you, Charlie. On a new development, when does the electricity for the streetlights start being paid by the city versus the developer?
When you say so, and, and I guess that means when the roads and the infrastructure approved by the board.
Do we have any idea how many streetlights out there right now in our system that we're paying for that the developer should be?
We're auditing that right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Madam Mayor Protim, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend and restate the rates for the consumption of electricity applicable to street lighting schedule thirty-two A.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best? Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty-six.
Next item is consider an ordinance to amend and restate the rates for the consumption of electricity applicable to the introduction of commercial industrial load profile data service, schedule LD, LPDS. I'd like to ask Mr. Bouchard to come up and present this item.
This is a new product that I'm recommending. Uh, we consider offering our rate schedules. It's designed for commercial and industrial customers only. Um, it's, it's not available to our residential customers at this time. But what it is, is it provides customers real-time access to their meter data. And I've already have one customer asking for it. I don't expect that there'll be, the floodgates will be open and everybody will want it. But there are some customers that think it's very important to manage their energy on a real-time basis and make decisions, particularly if you're managing our CP rates and, and trying to, to shed demand, um, based on price points of our system. So in the past, customers would ask us for their meter data, and we'd respond, and we gather it, and we'd send it to them, and it would be old data. And this gives them a product where they can almost have it on a real-time basis, and, and they can use it to make good, wise operating decisions.
Charlie, so the pay-as-you-go, when I'm able to pull up on my cellphone and see my daily consumption, is this not similar? But it's going to be for more of a commercial, industrial size instead of residential? Because obviously we do have something like this for residential, because I can see, not necessarily real-time, I can see the next day.
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that is a product that's available to our residential customers right now. I'm looking at some other solutions, just not ready to roll them out. Um, this is, um, much more enhanced than what you're seeing in pay-as-you-go.
Board have any questions? It'd be a pleasure of the board for item twenty-six.
Mayor Protim, I make a motion we adopt ordinance to amend and restate the rates for the consumption of electricity applicable to the introduction of commercial industrial load profile data service.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle?
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Uh, starting with Alderman Bingle, do you have any, uh, appointments tonight?
I have one tonight. Um, Madam Mayor Protim, um, I'd like to appoint Travis Oakley, or reappoint Travis.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to appoint Travis Oakley, or reappoint Travis Oakley to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. That's it for me tonight. Do you have any?
I do. I'd like to reappoint Jim Bisby to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mayor Pro Tem, I do have an appointment, but I'm going to hold off on mine today. Alderman?
Not tonight.
Okay. Alderman Best?
I do. I was so happy when I talked with this young man. He has an interest to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board. He wanted to be here tonight, but he sent me a little information about himself and wanted me to read it to the Board, so I'm going to do so at this time, ma'am. Don't mind. His name is Kyle Dearing. He is a Ward Five resident. He says, "Good evening, Board of All. My name is Kyle Dearing. I am twenty-three years old and am a resident of this beautiful town we call New Bern. Some of you may know of me from the American Legion Post five thirty-nine here in New Bern, where I served as a service officer for the post. I also regularly attend the New Bern Military Alliance meetings, as well in hopes that both the active duty and veteran communities in New Bern are consistently taken care of. My wife, Kennedy, and I officially became residents of New Bern in May of two thousand twenty-one. I separated from the Marine Corps in August of two thousand twenty-one and decided that we wanted to make North Carolina and specifically New Bern home. I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board. Just as I have served my country in uniform, I cannot wait and ever so forward to serving this beautiful city my family and I now call home. Thank you all again, and happy birthday to Old Glory."
Ah, that's nice.
So I would like to make an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board of Mr. Kyle Dearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Alderman Odom?
Not tonight.
Attorney Davis, do you have a turn for him?
Nothing. Your report's fine, Mayor Pro Tem.
City Manager.
Just like to let you know, the Mayor Outlaw has joined the American Flood Coalition in Washington, DC this week to attend the Mayor Summit on Flooding and Sea Level Rise. Twenty-five local leaders from Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, Iowa, and Texas are meeting with several state and federal officials, including members of Congress, so we look forward to hearing what he has to say when he comes back. Also, I want to let you know that we did receive the final ARP fund payment this week. So that total amount is approximately six point seven million dollars. At the next meeting on the twenty-eighth, we are going to start looking at establishing project funds for some of the projects that the Aldermen have indicated that they wanted to see in their wards, so we look forward to that. Also, on the next meeting, we're going to have an update on the Stanley White Recreation Center. We've got our architect, CPL, that will be on site to give some information, and we'll have an opportunity to ask the questions at that time as well.
So you have... All right. New business, starting with Alderman Odom?
Just a couple of things. If City Manager or Attorney could help me out, I was contacted by former Alderman Victor Taylor, someone that he knew, reached out to him. They owned a single-wide trailer that was very much dilapidated. The cost to repair the trailer exceeded the cost of purchasing a new one, and he was told by Development Services, based off our ordinance, that once the trailer is removed, a new one can't be put in place. I don't know. I just need to verify, number one, if that's the case, and number two, if we could provide some assistance or some direction to them on that situation. I understand the purpose of it, but it seemed a little off that they could have spent twice as much to renovate the one that was there versus put a new one. I understand, but I just wanted to bring that up. And then the last thing is Alderman-elect Bob Britson and I met this afternoon for a couple of hours to look at some projects for Ward Six with the ARP funds. So, City Manager, I will send you a list of some of those, and it's... Some of it's going to require some information back, and I'll copy Bob, so he's in the loop with it. One of those would be to have Public Works look at our bike and ped plan and show the gaps in Ward Six of where we can actually complete some of that. And some would also include some items outside of Ward Six, but things that would benefit the greater good. So I'll send those to you, and then maybe at our next meeting, we can have some discussion of that. That's all. Thank you.
Alderman Best? Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me a brief update on the Pleasant Hill Community Center? When... Do you have an anticipated open house date for somewhere near in the future?
It's coming up in the near future, so just to give you an update, the shell of the building has been completed. When I was talking to our project manager today, I was informed that windows and the glass doors are about five weeks out. So basically, the whole building is boarded up. They've already started installing some of the rough-in for the HVAC, getting ready to install the interior walls. After that, they'll install the sheet rock, the appliances, and things like that, and finally, the flooring. So we probably have a good six to eight weeks left, but they are moving, progressing at a steady pace on that.
Okay, thank you. I had some... Some of my senior citizens asked me if they're ready to start. They said they want to come out to the building and do some line dancing.
Well, it would be a great space for that.
Yes. That was it. That was it now. Thank you.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight.
Alderman Astor?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Bingle?
I have a couple of things. Foster, today, I met with a group of people, and I had a question asked that I couldn't answer, and it was about drones and flying drones within the city and city parks. This very nice gentleman is a teacher out of the community college, and I guess teaches drones and how to use them, and was concerned about our city policy, no signage. I believe he's talked to Parks and Rec, but I told him that I would bring it up tonight under new business so I could get a clearer understanding of how the city allows drones, where they can, cannot fly them. Is it posted somewhere and how we regulate it?
It's currently not posted, and it is not regulated by the city. There's no ordinance that governs that. However, the FAA does govern the flying of drones. And a great example, Lawson Creek Park, Union Point Park, they're close to the airport, so there are some criteria in place that they can reach out to the FAA for that information. If they're wanting to do a class or something like that in one of the city parks, we recommend they reach out to Parks and Recreation, and they'll establish an agreement with them to use the parks.
Would it not make sense, though, to put, because of the use of them, I mean, they seem to be kind of everywhere here lately, but something in our parks that say, you know, drones are not allowed here, or drone, you must have, you know, or must contact FAA or something of that sorts, or something's posted to say what we can or cannot do?
We can certainly set up a policy to address that, yes.
I just think it would be in our best interest to do that. The next thing is, I just want to give a shout-out to the Sunnyside residents. A group of them have contacted me about a month or so ago, and I started working with them, and Ann Martin is their leader, and she has rallied that neighborhood like you would not believe, and just made a laundry list of issues and things they have. We've had a meeting with our Assistant City Manager, Al Kuley came out there. The chief has talked to them, and they are whipping that neighborhood into shape, and it's just great. It shows you when people get together, it's not all on us, it's not all on them, but it's a deal of working together, and they're making that neighborhood better, and they're cleaning it up, and they're getting, you know, things repaired and bringing attention to areas that needed attention. So I just want to say thank you to the residents of Sunnyside. I'm enjoying working with you and going to continue to work with Ann Martin, and Dana Cadetti, I think, or Gady is her name, and just really nice people, but I want to thank them for taking up the charge to do it. And then the last thing I want to address, and Chief, if you'll come up here, Mr. Vargas tonight talked about homeless, and I think we need to just address it for a minute to let you know that we do understand that we are looking at it. RCS is probably one of our most valuable partners that we work with. The chief knows that I get calls many times because in downtown, we tend to have the homeless population there. And of course, the Cedar Grove Cemetery is a big issue. That issue was brought to my attention at the meeting I was at again today about the gentlemen that are basically camping in our cemetery and seem to be homeless. So I wanted you to talk a little... I want the public to know we are addressing it, that we are reaching out to these people. RCS is trying to get them to come into the facility. They do have room in the facility, but people are not accepting it. So will you just briefly address that for a minute about the things we are trying to do?
Roughly six months ago, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak a little bit on this point. Roughly six months ago, the New Bern Police Department, in conjunction with several other stakeholders, RCS is a major component of this, formed a homeless outreach work group. Within the New Bern Police Department, Captain Morrison Brown heads our initiative in which we are looking at multiple options as to how the City of New Bern, the faith-based community, nonprofits, and others can come together to try to strategize things like transportation is another huge issue, how to best serve those that have special needs such as counseling, substance abuse, mental health, unemployment, things of this nature. We are looking at long-term strategies as a holistic approach to what we can do for the homeless, specific to the cemeteries and the other parks. These are open to the public, and we do not classify people that show up at the park as anything other than citizens who are occupying public space. That being said, those parks are closed at dark. It is the expectation of the New Bern Police Department to enforce trespassing. The initial strategy is simple. If you're trespassing in a city park after dark, we'll give you a warning. You have to leave. If you consistently violate that, then we'll take enforcement action. RCS is doing a phenomenal job in trying to convince those that are leaving their facility during the day. And oftentimes, what we find is they, those that are spending the night or those that find themselves leaving RCS only to return later on, will, for a lack of a better term, go to the cemetery and just spend the day there. Again, there's nothing illegal about that. I pass no judgment on that. But what we would like to be able to see is those that have nothing else to do, and for a lack of a better term, have no transportation options, is to give them that transportation option. Potentially, they could find employment opportunities. They can go to other services like the REX Center, the YMCA, the Salvation Army, there are many other options. We do have the ability to transport them, and we're working with other vendors to assist in that regard. So there has been a great deal of effort being applied to the homeless. You can imagine some of the problems that we have with some of the homeless that do not want our help. It's a liter horse of water scenario, but the solution is providing as much assistance as we can and allow those that are receptive to our request to take that. And we think that that is a strategy that will work. But the reality is, we're not going to fix homelessness, but what we can do is provide the best services possible with the resources that we have.
Thank you. I think it's just really important. We have people come up here many times to say many things, and a lot of it is disinformation or whatever. I've determined that it's time to speak up and say that we are doing things. I mean, we've been all over this. No one wants to see people go unhelped if they need help. So I have been working for months with the chief here on these issues and calling with RCS. You know, I had a great experience with RCS, and then I got a phone call that there was a family living under the bridge at Union Point. And what had happened was the family came here on pretense they were going to have jobs. They did not get the jobs, so therefore, they had no place to live, stay, and they were under the bridge. Somebody knew somebody who knew somebody who knew me. And I called and got with ZEB, we got with the police department. Within forty-eight hours, there was money there to put them in a hotel for three nights. They found them a job, and now, you know, these people are in a much better situation. But there are things going on, and I want to make sure our citizens understand and know that we are trying to work with this and do this. You know, building a shelter for people doesn't mean you're going to help the homeless population. So like you said, you can lead them to water, but you can't make them drink sometimes. But I understand also, too, the statement I made today is that our public spaces are our public spaces, and we cannot prohibit people from being in those public spaces, such as the cemetery. But it does close at dusk. Is that the hour? It's at dusk. So if they're in there afterwards and a police officer sees them, they can ask them to leave. So please understand to the rest of the Board and to our citizens watching at home here tonight that we do take it very seriously, and we are working on it. And, you know, I appreciate the efforts of the police department, as well as RCS, Mercy Clinic, and all the other services that have been out there working with us.
Is that all you have?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right, so it is Juneteenth week for us in the City of New Bern. Anyone, please make sure you go out and support Art Walk, Bank of the Arts. Mr. Tyrone Brown, he is one of the artists there, and he has done beautiful portraits of Mama Sampson and Mr. Johnny Sampson. So just go and check it out. It'll be there to the end of June. Today's Tuesday, so we've done Zoom in the Park. Tomorrow, I'm giving out the schedule for anybody watching. It's HBCU and Divine Nine, Great Day for the Youth. We'll be at The Village. That's ten forty-six Broad Street, and we'll have the youth there. We're going to, you know, interact with them, talk to them about HBCUs and Divine Nine. That is free. On Thursday, we have the Triumph Palace Lecture Series at seven PM. That's hosted by Ms. Sharon Bryant with Triumph Palace. That is free. Then you have Friday, Younger Professional Social Rooftop Annual Juneteenth Celebration. That is a ticketed event, and it's an amazing event. I'm biased. And then Saturday, thank you to the staff. We're so excited for our festival this year. The parade starts at eleven o'clock, and then the festival is from twelve to four, and then fireworks is at...
It will be approximately nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen, and it's going to be amazing. So please, I know that there is the Tript River...
Raffray.
Raffray, so you know, when you get done there, come and visit. It's going to be a good day. And then Sunday, we have my Alpha Remembrance. We usually do that with the mothers in the community. We usually go to Union Point around five PM and kind of just pray. So that is the agenda for Juneteenth. We appreciate all that have sponsored and donated to make this. I just want to continue like I always do to thank the staff. You make me look good as an Alderman and the work that I do in the community. Thank you, Foster, for all the things that you do. Thank you, Mayor Outlaw, for allowing me to sit here and be Mayor Pro Tem tonight. I really appreciate it. I don't have anything else. The Board doesn't have anything else. Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. Page one forty-three, three ten eleven, A two.
Subway.
Second. Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're in a closed session.